Stanley City Council meeting, I'll adjourn, or start at Tuesday, October 8th, 2024 at 7:00 P. M. And if you would, everybody rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the eye of the United States of America and to the Republic, which we stand as one nation under the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everybody had a chance to look over the minutes. If so, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Go move, second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Planning and zoning recommendations, Mr. Hybrider.
Mr. Mayor, council members, we had a regular meeting last evening. Uh, up first was a replat of a lot at 523 Fourth Street Southeast. He wanted to go from a meets and bounds to a legal description. Dave Johnson was present and the the plat has been completed, it's at the courthouse for review, so it has not been returned completed. So we did it contingent upon the approval from the courthouse that I could sign it and now I ask that the council allow the mayor to sign it contingent upon its corrections from the courthouse.
Okay, can I uh, get a motion?
Motion to approve recommendation of the planning zoning committee.
Okay, your second? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, and did your motion include the fact that we do it contingent?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, make sure that's written in there.
And then our other order of business is that next month, our Monday meeting would be on Veterans Day and the office is closed, everybody's off. So we've done this in the past, we meet on Tuesday at 4:30. Our meeting should go fairly quickly and we figured at 4:30 it should give the girls enough time to get the minutes written and in front of you, people by, by your meeting time on that Tuesday, the 12th.
Okay.
Other than that, there was nothing else unless you have any comments or questions?
Oh, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
P and Z Administrator Report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. As you can see, we still have a few building permits trickling in. Uh, we do have the two cement slabs for the church, a backyard fence, the widening of the driveway apron, that is part of the Fifth Street project. Um, and then we do have the new restaurant on the list. Uh, that will be coming and that will be the McDonald's, that will be between Cashwise and Tractor Supply. Um, and then we just have a special event mobile food permit. Uh, so if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
It's between Cashwise and what?
Tractor Supply.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Full size. Not a condensed one or anything from what I could tell on the plans, so I think it'll be a good addition to the community.
Yeah. Hey, can I get a motion to uh, accept the P and Z Administrator Report and building permits?
So moved, second.
Okay.
Ty.
Motion and a second, it's on the table, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, liquor license for Mainstay Suites Stanley Sunrise Hotel.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Last time, uh, when I get here, that time, uh, like, uh, your decision was the manager should be the local, so when, like, when we closed the hotel, so we hired the local manager. So he's going to be stay in the hotel right now and he's looking for the apartment, so when he find the apartment, he will move in a, like, in town. So we have the local manager.
Okay, so on your application, you checked, no, you're not a citizen of the United States. Is that accurate?
Answer.
On your application says citizen of the United States, and you checked no.
Yeah, so manager is a permanent resident, he's not a U. S. Citizen, he's a green card holder, but the owners, owners are the U. S. Citizen. He is a green card holder, he's a permanent resident.
See, that falls.
Yeah, so he is the lawful permanent residence green card holder. No, he is. Uh, because he move here, like, in town, in Stanley, like, he move here on October 1st, but he's been a United States, like, more than, like, three months. But he was in Wisconsin, so he move here just for this job, so he move in Stanley on a day of the closing on October 1st. That's why we mentioned, like, the seven days.
But, so he lived in Wisconsin prior to this?
Yeah.
So you have to be a resident of North Dakota for?
Yeah, he is, he is right now, he's the resident.
To be for 30 days prior to
Oh.
being able to be listed as the license holder, correct?
Well, so technically, your residency wouldn't change to the state of North Dakota until you've been here 30 days. So you can't claim that you're a resident of North Dakota if it's not.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, but he has a state ID right now, like, from North Dakota, but we can wait till 30 days when he gets, like, 30 days, like, happen, then after we can apply for the liquor license, but right now he has a state ID.
That's correct, right? So in 30 days, you can come back and apply for the liquor license.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, so right now the bar and restaurants both are closed, so we can wait till 30 days and, like, in November 1st, we will apply again for the liquor license. So, uh, that's good for us, right? Like, after November 1st. Okay, yeah, thank you so much, we really appreciate that, thank.
Thank you. Okay, Ara Heinley, Max Mix request. Yes.
She's either. Is that your sister again? We have to wait to talk about it?
She, her daughter had a game, so she'll be on her way.
We just move on.
Just move on to Visitors Committee until it happens.
Randy did mention that possibly wasn't sure if anyone would be available. Uh, you'll see the minutes in front of you, so there was one application from the Montreal County Egg Improvement for their egg banquet at the Montreal County South Complex on November 6th, and the amount they're requesting is 4,200 and the committee recommends the full 4,200.
Motion to approve the Visitors Committee recommendation.
See, there's, there's a motion and a second on the table, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Is that the only thing we had for Visitors Committee?
Yep.
Okay, Rose Engineering Updates.
Hello. Um, so our Fifth Street Southeast Reconstruction Project, the Cap'n Fruit Plan Phase 2 is going along, they did all the concrete work, it's all been prepped for paving, they actually started the paving today. Uh, my understanding is they got the first lift done, that there is some issue with the machine that delayed a little bit, but they ended up getting the whole first lift done, plan to get the second lift done tomorrow, and then the paving should be completed. Um, last I talked with Crow River, their plan was to come back next week, do the topsoil and the grading for the boulevards and uh, other kind of tie-in areas. Uh, they're gonna wait to seed it until next year, just because their only option at this point in the year is dormant seed, which tends to turn out pretty crummy. So they asked, they could wait to seed it until next year and spray the topsoil for weeds this year, uh, which we said is fine, but we just gotta make sure it's prepped and we'll make sure that they do that correctly. Um, today we're looking for approval of pay application number three, which covers everything through the concrete work, uh, won't include the paving work they did today, but it'll include everything else in essence that's been done so far.
Motion to approve payoff three.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second on the table, any discussion? If not, uh, all in favor, signify, oh, we, yeah, we better go around, sorry.
Kirk.
Aye.
Jesse.
Aye.
Ty.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
George.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Okay, hearing no ayes, motion carries.
All right, moving on, uh, the Fifth Street Southeast Commercial Repair, um, they've gotten the pipe installed down Fifth Street and most of Jared Street now, but for where there are Gerard Street, except for where that, uh, northern access to the post office is, because they've been phasing it, so that way people always have one access point. They should be switching it over now, where they'll be working here soon on the northern end, get that pipe installed, people have access on the southern point. Um, we did end up having to subcut both Fifth Street and Gerard Street due to unsuitable materials. The Fifth Street was failing proof rolling test, uh, for over half the street, no matter how much it was kind of worked, it was very silty material that was kind of pumping, uh, very kind of bluish-blackish clays that were clearly soaked with water for too long, as it was kind of wrapped in R1 fabric, which is impermeable and was just trapping water in there. Um, that street, we did a subcut of six inches, it ended up working out really well, it's looking good and holding up tight. On Gerard Street, we had to go a little deeper, because that was actually, topsoil was what we found under, buried underneath there, vegetation and sand. Um, and today they actually tore into Tammy Street and we found the same material, it was actually even worse than Gerard was. Um, for those, we authorized subcuts of 18 inches to try and build it back up, which we're gonna build up with aggregate class five, to try and give it some strength to the road, and that should give us the road that's gonna last, and then we can drain it out with this perforated pipe as well, so we'll get a lasting product, but.
Putting fabric under all of that, too?
We're putting GeoGrid in.
Yeah.
Um, we're wrapping the pipes kind of in a burrito of a permeable fabric that lets the water through, but not the sediment, to try and drain it out. We're not putting that R1 fabric in that was originally in the road that doesn't let water through.
Right.
That, that was part of what, when we started tearing into it, we could see was part of the original problem, was all planned spec fabric, but they did not specify what kind the plans that were done before us. And, uh, the fabric was put in, most of it was an R1 fabric, which is a reinforcement fabric, which is a very good product, but it's not made to go in between your base and your subgrade. So in essence, it ruined the subgrade by trapping the water in it, in an area that already had water under the ground.
Right.
So we did end up having to authorize subcuts, the cost is likely going to estimate increasing to the project. Now with Tammy added in today, will, comes out to about $270,000 based off their bid prices for subcuts. Um.
I did go look at it after you called.
Okay.
And they, whoever built that portion of the road didn't take anything out of it, to me, it looked like they built it right on top of the slough. It, it literally smelled like rotten grass and and it was that black bottom of the slough gumbo that was in there, so it was 100% necessary to do what they did.
But we don't want it to happen again.
Right.
You know, I mean, that's just the bottom line.
Go over it in two years without it back, doing it again is what it will, I'm all to the.
You have to have a good base, so.
And that smell that Chad's referring to is a really common sign of, uh, vegetation kind of in there. It's that vegetal decay smell, and that means you got topsoil that mixing with your clays, as soon as you have topsoil mixing to your clays, it's not gonna last. You've, in essence, ruined that material for creating a strong base of your subgrade. So those are kind of what we end up having to go through, they're still planning on paving all three streets. Um, they were talking about concrete for October 14th, it sounds like we're kind of pushing that back slightly, and they're gonna look towards the end of that week now, instead of the beginning. I think some extra cleanup due to the wind that they had to do, and some crews have to move to other places to help clean up there, too, kind of just slowed them down at the beginning of this week a little bit. Um, we are looking for approval of pay application one, which covers some of this work, it's, uh, up to the Friday before last.
Motion to approve pay application one.
Okay, there's a motion to approve, uh, payoff one, is your second, Kate? Alin, would you?
Oh.
Hi.
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 Chad.
All right.
Hearing no ayes, uh, motion carries.
So next on my list here is the multi-community chip seal project that we've got going on. Um, the Burke County Attorney has finished the review of our joint powers agreement, and, uh, we passed it on to Alin to pass on to the city attorney, I'm not sure if they've had a chance yet to review it. Uh, did it all seem okay and? Okay, so if that's the case, I'm kind of just looking for approval here of, uh, approval vote to approve the joint powers agreements, that way we can sign that and work with Burke County on this chip seal project.
Mayor, sorry, I'm gonna interrupt Patrick, so I did just hear back from Ryan today on it, and to them, yes, it was good, but because this also deals with special assessments, it was suggested that I pass it along to our bond council to review, which I didn't get a chance to do today, so.
I don't need anything today, just kind of note that's going on then, and, uh, next meeting, hopefully, we'll talk about this a little further. But in essence, no, we're moving along on the design and moving along on the paperwork side of it, too. Um, last is the lead service line replacement program, uh, Public Works is going to investigate some of those lines, uh, to my understanding, they haven't had a chance yet, I just kind of wanted to put it on here, so we didn't forget about it. If there's anything you guys would like to discuss further on it, we can, otherwise, I've got nothing to do.
Yeah, I'd like to see what that spot check is.
Fair enough, well, that's all I got for you guys today, and I appreciate your time.
Okay, thanks. Hey, resolutions.
Mayor, Ara is here now.
Oh, all right. Let's step back to that then. The Max Mix Request, so.
Back there.
Yeah, okay, sorry for being late. Okay, I am just planning to have a party for, um, the opening for the restaurant. Um, it's almost finished, I just need to, the ramp, I think will be finished next week. My plan is, um, to have a party for everybody in here and to have, like, a extra, um, like, a tent, cover, I'll cover it, and I would like to have some bartenders over there and a DJ, or maybe like a band or something like that for the opening, and and fireworks, and that's it.
You want outside liquor?
Uh huh.
So you'll need to get a, you, because you don't have a liquor license, right?
I do.
Oh, you do have one, okay.
Mayor, may I make a comment? Obviously, her liquor license would only cover the inside of her building, so, yeah, she would have to. And I guess that's where I wasn't sure when she stopped in today, if she intended to do it outside, or if she was gonna do it inside the building. So I don't know if, then we'll have her, you guys want to approve the special event liquor license, I can have her quick fill one out?
Yeah, because if she moves, uh, uh, to the parking lot of her restaurant, and you would need the special event liquor license, because it's outside the walls of your restaurant.
Okay, and then she'd also have to have it fenced in.
Yeah, whatever all the requirements are.
Yeah.
More different than when we have.
Like a street dancer.
Dance or. Yeah, what, I mean, whatever satisfies the requirements, I guess, is.
Yeah.
And you'll have to get with chief, um, uh, and officer, because there's music.
Okay.
As I said, Lieutenant Jenkins is gonna hold me tomorrow, when he comes in, so he's gonna come see you and get all of the R side of things covered for you.
Okay, sounds good, uh huh.
The only thing that I have a little reservation with is the fireworks. On flat roofs on Main Street, over our car.
In old buildings.
Old buildings. And all from, I can speak on behalf of the fire department, that we would just assume that it not be okay to have the fireworks for the fear of fire.
Yeah, I, I guess I wouldn't recommend having fireworks up there either, so.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, that, that's kind of a stretch for me, I can't get on board with that, but the rest of it, I have no problem with. That's just my opinion, there's five other people in here that have to.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, citing, you know, recent events that, you know, affected communities and just as dry as everything has been. I think the fireworks be kind of little tone deaf at the moment.
Isn't she gonna fill that out tonight yet?
Yeah.
But, so, we can entertain tonight, Marley, because it's not on the agenda, you make an amendment?
Oh, we can.
Won't it still be part of just the Max Mix because of the liquor license?
Could be.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve liquor license transfer to her parking lot and the music or the DJ and no fireworks.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. And you're good with that? Okay? Any other discussion on it? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, now we'll move to resolutions.
Hey, bear with me, we have, we have four resolutions for three different districts, so the first one would be 59, which is for the John Ryan Residential Street Portion, um, so the first one would be resolution creating the Improvement District 59.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second on the table, any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify.
Gotta do roll call on resolutions.
Yeah.
Kirk.
Aye.
Jesse.
Aye.
Ty.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
George.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Hearing no ayes, motion carries.
Second one for District 59 would be resolution directing engineer to prepare report.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, motion is second.
Jesse.
Second by Jesse, motion by Chad, Alin.
Kirk.
Aye.
Jesse.
Aye.
Ty.
Aye.
Randy.
Aye.
George.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Hearing no ayes.
Sorry.
Go ahead, what are you gonna say?
Just getting in a hurry to.
Okay, any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
You already did that.
We did roll call.
Oh, Jesus, yeah.
Sorry.
Lost in my paperwork over here, couldn't be doing two things at once here, so.
Okay, so then, yeah, we're good to.
Is there any other resolutions?
Yes, sorry, we're not done.
Oh, yeah, I knew there was a bunch, so.
Okay, uh, next one would be for District 59 as well, resolution approving engineer's report.
Second.
Any discussion? Lynn?
Kirk.
Aye.
Jesse.
Aye.
Ty.
Aye.
Randy. George.
Aye.
Chad.
Hearing no ayes, motion carries.
Last one for the moment, for District 59, would be resolution declaring work necessary for the improvement, and we, we we would need to set a date for the protest hearing. So it, after first public publication, which would be next week, we can do it 30 days after that, so we can do it like the week of November 18th.
Okay, move to approve and set the public hearing on November 18th.
Uh, time?
Four o'clock at City Hall.
Can second.
Okay, motion and a second. George, second.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Why do I not have? Sorry, I'm trying to fill these in as I'm going to. Roll call, okay, Kirk.
Aye.
Jesse.
Aye.
Ty. Randy. George.
Aye.
Chad.
Hearing no ayes, motion carries.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wish I could say we're done, now we're on to District 60. Same case, uh, resolution creating, so this would be for the street in portion, the street in proportion of the commercial, uh, in the John Ryan edition.
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion by George, second by Chad.
Kirk.
Aye.
Jesse.
Aye.
Ty.
Aye.
Randy. George.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Hearing no ayes, motion carries.
Next one for District 60 would resolution directing engineer to prepare report. Kirk.
Aye.
Jesse.
Aye.
Ty. Randy. George.
Aye.
Chad. Next.
Yeah, my turn?
It's your turn.
Hearing no ayes. Hearing no nays, motion carries.
I'm just trying to get through these.
Me that screws up every time, so.
Okay, still for District sixty, resolution approving engineer's report.
Second.
Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Randy.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Chad. And next one.
No nays, motion carries.
Sorry, okay, next one for District sixty would be resolution declaring work necessary, same case, we need to set the protest hearing.
Set out the same day. Motion to approve and set protest hearing for November eighteenth at four o'clock, four fifteen at City Hall.
Can, wonder, sorry, I guess I should have asked bond counsel if we'd have to do, if we can just do four o'clock for all of them? Or do we have to have a spaced out?
I don't know why you'd have to, but if you just say four fifteen, that covers it anyway, so.
I think, yeah, I would think in my mind you'd have to have two or three, however many different approvals you have, each one needs to have its own chance to
So do we, wanna do four oh five?
Sure.
Okay.
Whatever, good with whatever on that, just.
Kirk.
Hi.
Oh, wait, no, did I get?
All second.
I could write too. Okay, Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Randy. George.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Hearing no nays, motion carries.
Okay, now we're on to District sixty-one, which would be the chip seal. So this would be the resolution direct. Sorry, give me one second. Okay. Sorry, back to resolution creating the District sixty-one.
Motion to approve. Second.
Jesse. Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Randy. George. Chad.
Hi.
Hearing no nays, motion carries.
Okay, next one for sixty-one would be directing engineer to prepare report.
Motion to approve, second.
Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Randy. George.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Hearing no nays, motion carries.
Okay, next one still for sixty-one would be resolution approving engineer's report.
Motion to approve, second.
Was that you, George? Okay. Okay, Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Randy. George.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Hearing no nays, motion carries.
Final one, um, for District sixty-one, resolution declaring work necessary, same case, we need to set a protest hearing.
Move to approve and set protest hearing for November eighteenth at four ten.
Second.
Sorry, who's second? Jesse, okay. Okay, Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Randy. George.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Hearing no nays, motion carries.
Yeah, so I covered all the resolutions, um. We wanna, sorry, the water and wastewater operator agreement.
Yeah.
So I know, and I'd had a discussion with Dave, that I know they are working on getting their certification. So I think just to kind of appease the state for the time being, you know, we had already initially approved one last year. And it would have to be renewed annually until we get someone that's certified to the class that's required. So we just need a motion to approve this with Ward Hyde Breder.
Motion to approve the operator memorandum of agreement for water.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, motion carries. That's it on that, right? Uh, N D O, uh, N D D O T final progressive bill on that walking path, shared use path.
Motion to pay. Second.
Okay. Lynn.
Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Randy. George.
Hi.
Chad.
Hearing no nays, motion carries. RTC phone system quote.
I get to talk again, sorry. Okay, so you see, there's two quotes in front of me, in front of you. So one would be after, this would be to upgrade our current phone system here at City Hall. It would be internet based, so I guess the only con to that would be as if we lost internet, but a lot of our day-to-day stuff is on the internet anyways, so I mean, we wouldn't be able to do any payments online, so. I guess that would just kind of fit in with, you know, not having the ability to do online payments or send out emails or. But, so you'll see, and I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to look, but when we initially got the phones that we have, which was for Avaya, I believe we paid almost ten thousand dollars. So you can see with this new system and all of the features that he showed me, there's definitely way more features than our current phones have. Like, we can't tell if someone else is on another line. Where this would give us the capability to, we can transfer calls. If we wanted to, we eventually could do, they do have a mobile app that if we wanted to look at that down the road, that we could actually transfer calls to, say, the public works. If somebody called up there, instead of giving them out their cellphone, we could just have it transferred directly to them. But you'll see, so the, the quote would be for the equipment and the installation, which would be two thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-eight, three, thirty-eight cents. And then, like, our monthly service would be two hundred and three dollars and eighty cents, and if I, because our lease has, our, the phones were leased that we got, and, oh, we haven't gotten our bill for the month. But if I remember correctly, for our leased phones, it's like three hundred and thirty-five dollars a month, and that's not including all the other charges for internet and and also there'd be no charge for long-distance calls anymore either.
Three hundred and five dollars, we currently pay for leased telephone services.
Oh, did, was that on the bottom of that one?
Right above RTC networks.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see that one.
Do they support, uh, the, no, if you have problems?
Nope, and that's.
Somewhere else to have them troubleshoot our phone system, correct?
Correct.
There, all IP phones in?
It would be all for all of City Hall.
Okay, but as well as out at if shop and stuff?
To be on the same system.
Okay. So then we just have to add, see, how many, just one phone? Okay, so we just have to include one more phone then.
Sixty-one. Change, have included the mobile app right away, so that we're not handing out the numbers we can transfer directly to them.
Okay, once I get that set up, they're gonna send me a QR code for you to be able to load it on to your phone.
Okay, there's a motion, you made a motion, right, Chad, to? Sir, second? George, second? Uh, let's do a.
Okay, Kirk. Jesse.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Randy. George.
Hi.
Chad.
Okay, hearing no nays, uh, motion carries. Okay, special event liquor license.
So you have two special event liquor licenses in front of you. The first, the first one would be for a birthday party on October twenty-sixth, and that would be held at the Fair Building for the five spot. Second one would also be the five spot, and this is for the C S W Christmas Party to be held on December fourteenth at the South Complex.
Is there any issues with them?
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, motion in a second on the table, uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Motion carries. Police report, please.
Good evening, um, I know I talked about it last time I was up here, but we have our two officers that are currently at the academy. The, yesterday was their first day in person. Today, they had a mile and a half run, I think they're both alive, because they both called me earlier today, so that's a good thing. In your packet, I put some statistics for the last four years. I thought it would be interesting for your guys' viewing pleasure. If you want me to go over it, I will. But you can see a significant change in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four with calls for service, arrests, citations, traffic stops, and all of the other things that we have listed there, to include the drug charges. When I pulled these stats, you can see the significant change starting in March of twenty-three, when I was appointed to this position. And you can see in twenty-four, that's up till today. So we're only ten months and eight days into this. So we still have a couple more months to go on that. The, the weights that you see for the narcotics recovered, that is just from seizures within the city limits. That is not from when our K nine officer goes to other agencies to assist. This is solely stuff that has occurred in Stanley. You guys don't have any questions regarding that? Our citation writing program that we have, I'm gonna be doing some updates with them. I'm looking at city ordinances, uh, city ordinances are kind of old, they haven't been updated in quite a while. So I'm gonna, during this winter time coming up, I'm gonna start looking at that and getting our system so we can um, have everything the same in both systems, so I'll probably be coming to you guys to talk to you about uh, some minor changes to the city ordinances as we move along, so.
Does this fit in for the police department's Facebook page that they have, where they're looking people in the city all the time, so? Not secret.
Yeah, well, it's all public record.
All public record, and since it's in your packet, it's open to the public anyway, so. If you would like me to post it, I'll be more than willing to tomorrow when I come into work.
Well, that's not a bad thing for people to know.
Correct.
Good.
Okay, I will get it done tomorrow. Any other questions for me?
No, just one observation, it looks like, you know, with methamphetamine, seems like that's really on the decline, and I think that's a good sign that I think the reputation has gotten out there, and, uh, you know, to go from twenty-three grams to four grams. Yeah, it's a sign we're going the right direction, so people wonder if we're making any difference.
Oh, we are, we definitely are, and we know that when we contact these individuals that our K nine handler and our officers are arresting, because they constantly make the comments to us. I knew I should have taken eighteen oh four, I shouldn't have come through Stanley, I've been told to stay away. Please, we don't want, we don't want your drugs here, please leave.
Yeah, that's good news.
Yes. Um, I mean, it is possible. Right, they are up, and I can tell you, the, the one you pointed to was the, uh, the mushrooms. A majority of that was in a seizure of a search warrant that we did at one residence, so. That was just one individual. I don't know what he was, what his intentions were, but you're right, there is a problem, because the other ones are going up. There is a problem, and that's what our officers are working hard to combat. And this is a clear indication that we're definitely doing something for our community, so.
I mean, regarding that, I mean, I saw that too, but I mean, there is kind of a public push in some areas of the country to legalize marijuana and mushrooms.
That is correct.
That, that grassroots effort, there's people that are trying to make the push that why those should be legalized, so.
Right.
Feel like they're gaining popularity worldwide.
Not the pedestal for me to talk about that stuff right now.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, guys.
Good information to share, so. Okay, public works report.
Just a couple things, I had Dakota Pump out looking at a few of the lifts, they found somewhere and some stress in the bottom of the main lift pumps. And they sent me a quote on it, and we're looking at like twelve thousand six hundred to repair them. I guess I'd like to get them repaired, so I'm not taking my, um, spares out of service going into winter here.
Um, I've moved to approve, uh, the, our public work director's request for those, uh, main lifts. Twelve thousand five hundred, that'll get her.
I think it was twelve five or twelve six. Twelve five, okay. Then the other one I had was, yeah.
Those pumps that are in there? Do we know how old they are?
Um, not off the top of my head, I don't.
Okay, because I'm just looking down the road, is this something that we need to be, like, making a long range plan, because correct me if I'm wrong, but when you and I visited here a few weeks ago, you said the new ones that we put in at the county.
Yeah, the new ones, we, the new ones we put in at the county, so the ones at the county, we're running fourteen hours a day for the two pumps. And electricity a month was like eight hundred and fifty dollars just for electricity. The new ones we put in, it's a different style, they're running on average two hours a day. So I mean, we're saving electricity and it, there were just, we're not taking the life out of the pumps either. So I guess when these, it's time to replace these, I'd like to go with that same style, they're more efficient, and I think we're getting more bang for the buck too. Something to think about for the future.
I just need to keep that on there, so. I don't wanna put thirteen thousand in every year. Place them with something better, put that money towards that, I think that's.
Yep. Uh, the other one I had was, uh, oh, sorry.
Second.
Did George make a motion? Can you second? All in favor signify by saying aye. Twelve thou, do we have to on that? Doesn't matter, go ahead.
Guess we're spending money, so. Okay, Kirk.
Hi.
Jesse.
Hi.
Ty.
Hi.
Randy. George.
Hi.
Chad.
Hi.
Okay, hearing no nays, motion carries.
Uh, the next one I have. Uh, the next one I have is, uh, coming to the winter months, and we get the fog and the snow, we get a, the girls get a lot of calls on the streetlights out here on Fourth, not working. So I've had, uh, Main Electric out to look at them, and they said the two cameras need to be replaced, they're, they're older cameras, and that quote was, was it 12.6 to replace those two? And when, uh, it's foggy or snowing, we get phone calls almost daily, I know the cops get a lot out there. Yeah, and that was their recommendation, is replace those two cameras that are giving us the fits.
Are these cameras?
Highway two.
Going to like, um, cash-wise?
For Jesse looking at me perplexed, like, why are we buying cameras for highway, um, stops, stoplights? So all of that equipment is our responsibility to maintain and replace. Yes, it, it controls traffic on a state highway, but the state highway is not, state highway department does not support them. It's strictly the community that they are benefiting, so.
Okay, these are the cameras that control the light, they're that's where I was confused, I was like, that's it.
So the, the one other thing that I think we gotta keep in mind, now that we've had a professional look at them, they've stated that that they should be upgraded. We're now aware of that, and if we choose to not do it, and something happens out there, do we shoulder the liability then? Right, so.
But right now, he put it in like a, um, it's not really, it's like, it's a different mode, it's not supposed to be in, he said, "This is getting you by," but I highly recommend him changing them out, because if the state does come by and does an inspection on it, I could be getting a nasty phone call saying, "Why do you have it set at this?" We have it set at that for them to operate right now. Otherwise, we're getting, it's, there's many of, many days that we're getting there that people are saying, "We sat here 10 minutes and it's not changing," and then they just blow through it.
And I know that does happen.
Uh huh.
Big motion for the recommendation to get two new cameras for the traffic lights.
Hey, there's motion. There's a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Lynn?
Kirk?
Aye.
Jesse? Ty?
Aye.
Randy? George?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Hearing no nays, motion carries.
Then the only other one was, um, I checked into that fence that we rent from Dakota Fence around the Greenstone Apartments, and that was $9,600 a year that we pay for that rental for that fence. So a lot of back and forth with Dakota Fence, you know, basically, how many times have we paid for them? We come to agreement, if we pay this next lease of $4,800 after that, those panels are ours, they're the city's property. So, um, I guess if the council decides to sell Greenstone at some point, I'd like to take those panels and use them for an impound or something, since we own them, I'd hate to just give them up.
Right. Oh, to run the Greenstone properties?
And aside, just like to say, thanks for saving it, because we would have renewed that lease come January 1st and paid another $4,800, so.
96.
There, well, yeah, there was, there was no option, it was
I mean, you've paid three times already.
Yeah.
Eighteen months of that, I'd be pretty worried to pay for that then.
Well, there's a lot of back and forth, but I guess I, I consider I won on it.
We'll take that. And, and I think duly noted that when we do sell that, it's not if it's me visiting with some people on it today again, then
Well, whoever.
Well, people.
Yeah, I'd just like to keep
Whoever does take that over or buy that property from us is gonna need, uh, a fence up around there for a while, so.
Yep.
We can rip them back.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay, let's move on to attorney updates.
I have no major updates, but as always, if anything comes up, feel free to reach out to myself or Ryan or Deb, for best to
Okay. Any questions for Megan? If not, we'll move on to council concerns. Kirk? Jesse?
Aye.
Megan?
Uh, I got one more of a request and concern, I guess. The local government teacher at the high school, Kelsey Nichols, asked if November 14th would work to do a government day here at the city offices uh, from 9:20 to 11:20, and have some of us represent and visit with the kids.
Yeah, we didn't ask before, so I, I don't, yeah, that's not a problem, I don't think.
Make sure one has it up your calendar, so she don't schedule.
Uh, city government day, uh, at the high school.
Nine, what'd you say, nine?
9:20 to 11:20. It'll be two groups flip-flopping.
Chad?
Uh, just one thing, Greenstone Properties, uh, since we were out there last and looked at it as a group, the east one has continually deteriorated even further, and I'd, I guess in my mind, to make that problem go away sooner, I'd like to at least get a bid from whoever can tear it down, and so that we can move forward with that, I think we still have time this fall if the weather holds and we could get that cleaned up, and then I did visit with Mike Heineck today, he was part of our committee.
Yep.
And he's still fully on board with getting that, the, the better of the two sold sooner than later, and being done with it.
So am I, so.
So hopefully, one second, hopefully, and within this next week, we can put together a meeting with the committee that was out there, it was Todd, Mike Heineck, Rayl Brandt, Marley and myself, I believe.
Roger Chelsky.
Roger Chelsky. Make a motion, Chad, uh, to put it out on quotes for demoing that one building.
Uh, what do you got? I think we asked for
I have a quote, um, can I say who it's from and the price, is that okay?
Yeah.
It's from Chamlee, and it's to remove the small apartment building and those two foundations that are crumbling to the north, I also got a quote to take everything down, but don't look at me like that.
That's, is that the whole building and the
Small apartment and two foundations? Yes. $79,120. And I can forward this to you if you want to present it to the committee, Todd already does have a copy of it.
I'd have to see that in a written form before, because that's, have you got it?
Yeah, do I?
Yeah, we asked, we asked for, asked, last month or
Yeah. You just said you wanted to see it, you have to zoom it. I also, the other part of that quote is if they were to come in, take everything down and put it back to grade, the way I explained it to Joe at Chamlee was, "I want Gene to be able to take the Schulte out there and mow it flat." Todd, one of those options, just because he wanted to get something to the committee. Price-wise, you see the other number on there below that $79,120, that's the number to take everything down to grade where it is mobile with a tractor.
Yeah, that's unreal.
Not near as much as what I thought it was going to be.
No.
There is interest in the, the one, mobile interest.
And it's like you said, let's go through and get that committee together and, and, uh, take care of it that way, so.
If you look forward to that, share that.
Me too.
And then we'll come pending on, I may request a special meeting, Marley, to take action on that.
We, we need to get it done now before we get a lot, bunch of weather. So, boy, if we could, if we could get it done for that amount, that would be crazy.
I would, I have for council concerns.
Okay, I, I just have one thing myself. I just want to thank the Stanley Fire Department and, uh, the Stanley Police Department, the Stanley, Stanley Ambulance, uh, and all the volunteers and people that helped with that fire over in Tioga. I think, uh, you guys did an amazing job, I think it's, I think it's great to do what we did. Um, I'm proud of everybody here, so just wanted that to be said. Um, judges report. It's been around, yep. You make a motion to
Oh, sorry, forget what I'm doing here, yes, uh, moved to approve the judge's report.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. Okay, we have the motion carries, uh, we have the bills, everybody had a chance to look over all the bills. And are there any questions on the bills, let's put it that way?
R T C's bill not in there just because we didn't get it yet, or?
Yes, because they do send those bills separately, so the other one would be for all our services, and the other one is for our leased phones, but yeah, we haven't received that one, so it still would be one of our monthly bills that we need to pay.
Yeah. Um, Randy, you had, you brought something up that was
I was concerned about this price of, uh, Prairie Ford for $1,766.50 for some tires. Um, I thought that was a little excessive in my mind, but apparently, uh, that's the going rate, is that the way it goes? That's a little high for four tires in my mind.
It's, it's, I guess I agree with you on, I mean, that's $1,766, that's over $400 a tire, that's high.
Well, I, yeah.
There's probably $20 worth of mounting and balancing on each tire though, and there's probably a 10, $5 tire disposal.
Still at $1,760 for
$20 a tire to mount them, I think that's
I just had tires and rims put on at, um, Larson's, and it was less than that, I guess, but
I just had Ford put on, the one Mustang cost me 1,900 and something, but turn them in to go, to go fast though.
Well, there's
Police Department funds are speed rated too, though.
I was just curious, and it seemed high to me, but that's what it is, that's what it is.
Yep, okay, well, everybody's, uh, taken a look at the bills, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
All in fa- All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, uh, with that said, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sir, second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Yeah, I think it's good. Oh, and here he comes with all this.